Welcome, everyone. We're going to begin tonight's meeting with a pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. What a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could I have a motion approving the village board meeting minutes from June 1st, 2023?
Move.
I'll second.
Any additions, corrections? Hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. A special part of our program tonight is some proclamations that are going to be presented, and the mayor's got three or four to read. Three, I guess. All right, our first team up is the girls' bowling team. If you want to come forward and, uh, I'm sure we'll have a, uh... Whereas the girls' bowling team, coached by sports bowler Gary Peterson, took the ball in the world by storm and drew to a state championship this winter. And whereas the loss of last year's star, maybe a bato, could have been a down season, but the girls on this chain did not let that happen, amassing a 14-1 league record and that one loss set the 44-match winning streak. The Bees were led during the season by the Speech duo, Julia 199 average and Jenna 197. And whereas the Bees dominated the sectionals, winning by over 500 points, and got a great effort from Julia Speech, high game of 278, who just missed the overall average title by a few pins, and the Bees were ready for the States. And whereas the state tournament became a two-team race, Baldwinsville and Longwood of Long Island, with the Bees' team effort leading the way, what 26-pin win, Jenna Speech took overall average honors to lead Beeville's championship surge. And whereas different team members took the lead in the finals, with Sam Hass notching at 235 in the first game, Jenna Speech rolled a 244 in the second game, Jenna Speech had 215 in the third game. He, the fourth game, was a 229 by Lizzie Hildreth. Jenna Speech led the next game with a 224, and the Bees were zeroing in on the title. Then Matty Hass and Jenna Speech matched 196 in the final game, as the Bees sealed the deal. Leila Trendowski was also a key member of this team. And therefore, I, Richard A. Clark, declare by the power vested in me as mayor of the state of New York, that as of June 16, 2023, the sports bowl is to be referred to as the home of champions for at least the next year. Congratulations, girl.[216.81][216.81](applause). Was a bowler when he was a kid, and I knew Gary Peterson as a young football player at Baldwinsville, and we've known each other for a long time, and it's always interesting to see former athletes continue on as coaching in our system, and it probably explains why we do so well. So congratulations to Gary and his team.[245.23][245.23](applause). All right, next up is the track hunter. This will be presented by Bruce Stevens, who was a former track standout himself at Beeville.
(laughter) Watch how fast he gets down there.
You used to tell me you were great, Bruce.
Yeah, I used, my track was at the Elizabeth Street School.[277.13][277.13](laughter) And I never ran more than 200 yards out of the high jump.
All right, here we go. Whereas Baldwinsville has long been a cross-country and track power, under the guidance of great coaches like Chuck Wilson and John R. Carroll. And whereas these sports are both team sports and individual sports, and this year is a great example. And whereas Solomon Holden Betts took home gold, both as an individual and part of its team. This after winning a state cross-country title in the fall and leading the cross-country team through an undefeated season. In cross-country, he won the SCAC championship for Coach Katie Dolan's team, and also set the home course record of 15-19. He finished second in the sectionals by a tenth of a second, and then won the state meet. Whereas at the state meet this spring, Holden Betts won the 3,000-meter steeplechase, then joined the 4x800 relay team that included Logan Hayes, Jack McAllister, and Jeff Reaganis. That trio had the Bees in second place when Holden Betts got the baton. He took charge and earned his state title with a time of 7:48.2. Whereas for an encore, Holden Betts won a medal in 3,200-meter run, finishing fifth. Hayes, McAllister, Caleb Ball, and Evan Smith teamed up for a fourth-place finish in the 4x400 relay, helping Baldwinsville finish second in the team standings. And whereas Coach Bill Spicer referred to this group as a once-in-a-career team, a group that was Section III indoor and outdoor titled teams in 2022 and 2023, and therefore, I, Richard A. Clark, declare by the power vested in me as mayor of the state of New York, that as of June 16, 2023, Baldwinsville has returned to the rightful place at the top of the running world. Congratulations to the track team.[381.03][381.03](applause).
There you go. You guys get this. Somebody gets this.[385.31][385.31](laughter) He did all the runnings.
Nice job. Thanks, Bill.[389.34][389.34](applause). Now he's our track coach. You're doing a great job. So, nice to be keeping home. Uh, next up is the boys' lacrosse team.[406.81][406.81](applause). And Dave Collins, so everybody understands, was a former lacrosse player for Baldwinsville, so it's fitting that he hand out this proclamation. Whereas Baldwinsville in central New York have long been hotbeds for lacrosse excellence dating back to the 1950s, and whereas a year ago Baldwinsville was declared the lacrosse capital of New York State for 365 days, and this boys' lacrosse team wore the 2022 crown well, won all challenges, and now wears the 2023 crown, thanks to a 95-win over Farmingdale on 6/11/23, and as a result is ranked 18th in the United States. Whereas the Bees have a 14-2 record and a top seed in the Class A sectionals, Beeville won the program's sixth Section III title with a 16-7 win over Liverpool. The Bees beat Corney 84 in the regional final. Then a last-second save by outstanding goalie Nick Carey headed to Lemoine next year, secured a 7-6 state semifinal triumph over Pittsburgh. And whereas Beeville weathered air quality delays and finally headed to Hofstra for the state finale against 18-3 Farmingdale. And whereas the Bees had a 5-3 halftime lead and a 6-5 edge heading into the fourth quarter, then Garrett Sutton goal and two from All-American Keegan Lynch clinched a second straight title for Coach Matt Wilcox's club. The fair and pure bond duo of Lynch, four goals and two assists, and Carson Dial, two goals and a assist, led the offense and led it to its PP. Whereas Coach Wilcox praised the defense of All-American Brady Pettifather Stevenson, Pat Ochs, Greg Marinelli, and Carey as the key to the championship run. And therefore, I, Richard A. Clark, declare by the power vested in me as mayor of the state of New York, that as of June 16, 2023, Baldwinsville will continue to be referred to as the lacrosse capital of New York State, and that title shall exist for a minimum of one year. Congratulations, guys.[549.16][549.16](applause). That's all I have. We're done. Thank you. Thanks for the help. Congratulations on our teams and to our...
You're welcome to stay, but if you want to leave, this is a good time to... (laughter) Thank you. Dick, I think you missed your calling. You should be a color man along with some play-by-play guy on a... As opposed to sitting here being mayor, you can be on TV.
Because you did all that reading, are we not going to have any mayor's comments tonight?[579.04][579.04](laughter)
Good luck, yeah.[581.04][581.04](laughter) Oh, he did.
Please call your health folks. This is John.
Okay, moving on to citizens' comments. We have Matt Hunt from the Baldwinsville Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening.
You've got a tough act to follow.
Yeah. Wow, what a testament to this community. Amazing to see former athletes who are still in the community who get to give the awards out. So, wow, what an awesome school district we have. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board, Chuck, Chief. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, I believe it's already on the agenda, the 2023 Taste of Beeville. Insurance has been accepted, secure deposit's been paid, so we're just here looking for the usuals, waiver of open container law for the day, waiver of the dumpster fee as we cut and get the dumpster service on our own, and waiver of the usage fee for the island.
Chuck, question on the dumpster. Do we take our dumpster away, or do they use the same carrier?
No, the, and this is, we've run this in the past, is they, part of their sponsors, they bring a dumpster, and we didn't know it, so ours was scheduled to pick it up too, so we just don't schedule ours for that weekend.
And the, the part of that reason, too, is the dumpsters that are on the island are sufficient for the garbage from the day. So the first year, we had a lot of overflow problems, and so it was just easier to bring a roll off, and then we can trade some memberships as well, so...
Okay, Matt, at the last meeting, and I don't know how the rest of the board, and I'm just one trustee, um, we had discussions and were saying we're, for nonprofits, we were willing to waive up to 50% of the rental fee.
Okay.
And I, as one trustee, would be willing to regard the chamber in that same vein.
Okay.
But inasmuch as the village incurs expenses every time these events occur, we feel it's not appropriate to pass 100% of those expenses onto the village taxpayer.
Understand. Well, I've seen that's been the trend lately, so I appreciate your willingness.
So we would be waiving 50% of the fee, we proposed down to 500. That's, that's me talking.
That, that, that's lucky, Steve. We did that with other people.
Yeah, yeah.
It's state assistance.
It's starting to be a trend, yeah.
Well, we did that with nonprofits, too, though, so this is a little different.
And the nonprofit was running a profit-making event that night, so we only waived half.
Yeah.
The other day was a free community event, and in my mind, we allowed them to use the facility. They were two different kinds of events.
Right.
Could I have a motion?
It's odd.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah, that sounds fair to me.
Okay, could I have a motion waiving the open container? And do you have times? Did you set up times?
Uh, noon to 10:00 p.m.
All right, so... Okay, from noon to 10:00, waiving the dumpster fee and waiving 50% of the island rental fee.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Have a good event.
Thank you. We look forward to it, as, as does the community. Not sure if everybody saw, but this past year, the event won second place in Syracuse Best Of for community food festivals. The only thing that beat us in the entire central New York area was Taste of Syracuse, and we also were top three in community event category as well, so bringing a lot of tourism and goodwill to the community, and look forward to a bigger, better event, so thank you.
I'm just gonna ask, is it all Baldwinsville restaurants out there?
Yes, yeah. We feature only restaurants in the 13027 zip code. The only caveat to that is we do generally have Lockland Distilling out of Phoenix, but part of Phoenix is in Beeville, and we don't have a distiller here, so that's really the only reason. But yes, every restaurant is, uh, in the Village, or at least in the Baldwinsville zip code, yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Good luck.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens who'd like to comment Cindy or Sally?
I don't know. No, I'm good.
Okay. Moving along to trustees' comments. I don't remember where we were, left or right, so I'm going there. I'll stick to the agenda tonight. Me, too. Me, three.
Four.
You're up, Nate.
I just wanted to say, yeah, congrats again to all the sports teams, and hope everyone had a good Seneca River Days experience. And with that...
You're gonna stick to the agenda, but I'm gonna add on to you, Nate. One thing that, tonight was nice that we proclaimed all these teams that won state championships. The girls' lacrosse lost in the state championship game. I mean...
Semi-finals.
Let's give them semi-finals, well, let's give them some accolades anyway. You know, they did great.
Yeah, they had a great run. The Cincinnati sister coaches...
I'm still not really supposed to be talking about that, because they're, Mike's still kind of really, really, really mad about that semi-final game, so we still pretend like that never happened. But, uh, yeah, still proud of them. And you know, you know what I like, Coach? I like how invested the previous coaches for both boys' and girls' lacrosse, and I would imagine it's throughout the entire athletic department as far as that's concerned. But, you know, they invested 60, 65 years of experience when it comes to coaching. I think, you know, that's probably a minimum, uh, you know, for the boys' and girls', and how heavily they are invested and how they took the championships that the boys' and girls' lacrosse teams have had over the past couple of years, really, really just, it was as if they coached the boys and the girls, and it was their championship as well. And I really, you know, I commend, you know, Doug Rowan, I commend Pete Farin for, for being that truly invested and that emotional about, you know, about the accomplishments that the new administrations have both had. So, you know, kudos to them.
Well, good point.
You're up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I got a couple things. Looked at a long list of items that the state legislature is considering whether passing the law or not, and one of them is a, um, it's a little complicated, but it involves the pilot money that we receive and how it affects our tax cap, and I'm sure Mark would be interested in this, because it would, it would change the way tax cap money is considered, or pilot money is considered a tax cap calculation, so that more pilot money would not penalize our tax cap efforts. And anytime we can get a break on that tax cap number, it's always interesting and helpful, and we'll see how that goes. Jody and I and Eric watched a presentation the other day from the TextMyGov people. That's the, uh, operation, it's a two-pronged thing, it has a notification system. For instance, I got a call from Chuck last week, we've got a water break on Genesee and Onyda right at the point. Uh, we're gonna have to wait till later because the traffic is so heavy right now, we're gonna bring in outside crew to do it, and we may lose water to Aspen Springs and Baldwin Hill in, for a while. So I put something on Facebook, uh, Jody had already put something on, I added to it, she had something on our website. I don't know that people on a Friday go and check out our Facebook site to see if anything's new. I hope some people saw it. This thing would, would ask residents to sign up and have their text, um, facility be available to receive an emergency bulletin from the village. We could have sent that out, and the 600 homes that were signed up to would have gotten a notice, people would have avoided Route 31, maybe. People in Baldwin Hill and Aspen Springs would have been prepared better. Uh, it's just one thing, we had water break back in the winter when it was really an emergency, when the people had lost, lost water to their homes. It would be good before the Memorial Day parade, before the turkey trot, before the parade of lights, to notify people, for instance, that the Four Corners will be shut down for a certain amount of time, as will these other streets. It only, it's only as good as the people who sign up for it, and the more people you get to sign up, the better, but it, it also has an interactive thing where, let's say you just moved to Baldwinsville, and you're not sure how you pay your water bill. You can type in "water payment," and it will bring up, actually, I have to also say Mark Baker was in on this, because Mark asked a lot of questions, which was great, uh, but it would, say, "How do I pay my water bill?" And it would say, "Call Village Hall and pay," you know, they will tell you whether if you want to come in and pay in person, you can pay by check, you can pay by credit card, uh, whatever. How do I find out about rush pickup? Call this number, the DPW, here's the schedule of rush pickup, you can call and find out more details. So it, it has two-pronged, one where we notify people of events happening, emergency and otherwise, and they can ask us about questions. "I heard there was a parade, can you tell me what streets are being shut off?" It's because I, I have to go to work early in the morning, and I don't want to get caught in the turkey truck traffic. So, uh, we'll get more details on it, and it's very interesting, it's something I know that Ruth Seiko has been a big proponent of, she's pushed it with me over the years. We need to get something like this. Uh, I don't know if you think it's cost-effective or not, but we'll go, we will share that information and, you know, make a decision. And there's no timeline, we don't have to do it in a week or two. We'll try to get more information for everybody. But it was a very interesting presentation, I thought they did a good job, it's been very simple for us people who don't understand all that technical stuff sometimes, and, uh, you've probably hearing more about that.
Did you, hey, wait, Dick, did you and/or Jody get an email today from Town Web? The company's called Town Web, Peter Stankovit, which does web design, communication platform, automatic notification features, payment online, a variety of things, might be somebody else to look at. Um, I don't know why I get all these emails. Somebody put me on a list.
Yeah, just forward it to me.
Will do.
Okay, yeah, forward it, I'd love to see that. Um, just as an update on that Lysander Water District up on Mills Road, the vote on that is going to be July 19th at Lysander Town Hall from noon to 8:00 p.m. for people who live in the proposed district. This is to decide whether to make, you know, create a water district on that road. Um, I know it's, it's not a slam dunk either way, there's some people for it, some people against it. Uh, if you have people you know live up there, remind them July 16th is the vote, and they need to be heard of. Um, just want to point out, we talked about this a little bit in the work session, and I know you talked about it in Public Works, people on Lock Street know that we are aware that that property across on the river side of Lock Street has not been kept up, and our code, new code guy is keeping track of that and trying to get them to come in and make it look a little more residential, cleaning out some of the grass and some of the small bushes. And so, and we have heard your concern, and we are working on trying to get that taken care of. Um, I get comments from time to time from people who think our code guy is kind of nasty, and I check it, and it's, the thing they find nasty is he sends them a letter that says you have to clean up your house. That's nasty. Um, you know, there's nothing pretty about telling somebody that their house is a mess, you know, that they've got garbage on their front porch, or that they haven't mowed their lawn in six weeks, and it's against code, and you've got to get it done, or we'll take action. Um, and people might not understand it, but that's sometimes the only way anybody listens, is with a threat of action. And it's not done because of spite, it's done because of the code in our village, and we're just asking you to be a part of it and fit into the neighborhood and make other people's lives better because you keep your property up, too. Um, just remind people that June 23rd, the Clydesdales will be in Teton. They're gonna start on Meadow Street, come up through, and stop at a few of the establishments and drop off some symbolic supplies of beer to some of the places that, uh, that a particular, uh, beer agency provides beer to. So on the 23rd and around 2:00, if you're home and interested in seeing the Clydesdales, it's a pretty good show. I mean, they're pretty attractive horses, and it's a beautiful wagon, and anywhere around that Four Corners area would be a pretty good spot to see them. Um, and don't forget that July 1st and 2nd, we have concerts on the island, and on the 2nd is fireworks, and we have asked that to be started by 10:00. So fireworks on July 2nd, if your dogs don't like fireworks, that's a good time to take them for a ride, and otherwise, get yourself a nice spot on the river and watch the beautiful fireworks. And that's all I have.
At least don't let them out. Okay, moving on to department heads. Start with our attorney.
At the last meeting, it was requested that I take a look at the, uh, security upgrade contract, and everything looks fine. I've looked at the, the bid itself, um, one minor error that I discussed with Chuck that had just a, the corporation put itself down as a sole proprietorship, and that, which it isn't, it's a corporation, which is meaningless as far as that's concerned, but other than that, I approve the, the contract, so it's fine to go ahead.
Okay.
Other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay, moving on to village board.
I just wanted to remind everyone, Anadaga County will be sending out reminders to those residents that have not paid their village tax. There's approximately 157 parcels, and it's about $125,000. That is before the penalties, and they have until October 31st to pay those. So those reminders are going out this week. Thank you.
And to the treasurer.
Just one thing, item B in the Under New Businesses, is a resolution for NY class, which we've talked about. I was under the impression that just approving them as a, as an improved financial institution at the annual meeting was good enough, but they have their own resolution that they want us to pass for them. So that's what you got, and I didn't, I wasn't aware of it until after we passed the investment policy last meeting, and I went to send the paperwork to them, and I'm like, whoa, what's this? And, uh, so it's, I think it's boilerplate, and it's just very straightforward. And then there's another resolution there, just to approve you, Bruce, and, and Dick to be transactors on that in my absence, or if anything ever happens to me, so...
So on I to B, are we, the way it's just where they're at, but there's a whole resolution we need to read?
There's a resolution that's attached, that was attached to the agenda, I think.
Yep, I sent it the other day, yep.
Okay, I didn't, yep. I got to move all the agendas coming through, great. Okay.
All right.
We'll bank on the rest of the board.
I read it twice, so I have one for you, one for me.
Oh, good.[1626.13][1626.13](laughter) Okay, moving on to our seniors' honor room.
Just a couple reminders for folks, the, our craft group will be having a summer craft sale on Friday, June 23rd, from 10:00 to 3:00. Public's welcome, so come on in and check things out and find some fun things. Also, the mammography van will be at the center on June 30th. You do need to make an appointment for that. Give us a call, and we'll get you the phone number. They're there from 9:00 to 3:00, June 30th, but you do need an appointment. And just to save the date for our car show, for those of you in the community that love to bring your cars for us to enjoy, that will be on August 14th, and hoping for a nice evening. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you.
Yep.
Public Works.
Real quick, the water park, we had a water break, the mayor made mention of it, on 31 right by Onyda Street, the other, it came, and we saw, we found it right around 3:00 in the afternoon, and we decided not to go after it until 10:00, because the roads, the traffic there is just ungodly. And we thought it was on tenants' line down there, we ended up getting a contractor to go with us, just because of the danger of where it was, how deep it was. It didn't end up being as bad as, as we thought, but they got it buttoned up and, and took care of. Jody did put that on Facebook for, for us early in the afternoon. We did get up there, normally on emergency break, less times we don't get to put flyers out, but we did, but in the meantime, I just, trustee Shepherd lives up in Baldwin Hill, and the way that name comes down, that, the way the shots are, terminates those areas up there. So I called, I sent him a message and said, just so you know, because I know different areas have their own Facebook page. And he put it on their Facebook page up there, and I didn't get one call. It got seen over 100 times. Yep. I had a couple of neighbors thanking me for the heads up. Yep. And they were also very appreciative that you came through the neighborhood and left flyers on D. Correct. And lots of times, we can't do that because it's so quickly, but I was amazed between what the village put on it, what you put on, and the flyers, when they're hitting the flyers out, they're saying, oh, no, we saw that on our Facebook page. So different areas, I guess, have their own pages. If over 100 people saw it, uh, that's gotta be 90% of the neighborhood. So, and they were... didn't get one call.
It got seen over 100 times.
Yeah.
I had a couple of neighbors thank me for the heads up.
Yeah.
And they were also very appreciative that you came through the neighborhood and left flyers on D.
Correct, and lots of times we can't do that because it's so quickly, but I was amazed between what the village put on, and what you put on, and the flyers, when they're hitting the flyers out there, saying, oh, no, we saw that on our Facebook page, so different areas, I guess, have their own pages.
If over 100 people saw it, that's gotta be 90% of the neighborhood, so, and they were, I mean, it's good, that's the sort of thing that I hope happens when we have the alert system that Ruth was talking about, that we can do that for everything.
And then the nice thing about this was it was isolated to the areas that were affected, and it went really well. Other than that, brush is back, we're back to brush Monday, not that anybody stepped when we were, the weeks we didn't have it, so we'll be back on Monday or Tuesday, we'll start brush next week. Anything other than that?
Monday is a holiday, I believe, isn't it?
Oh, that's right, so it's gonna be Tuesday.
Probably won't be doing it.
That's right, it's gonna be Tuesday, and we have a new holiday for that.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to read the resolution.
Was there a resolution, wrong, the police department wasn't aware of it?
No, no, this is Mark's resolution. But moving on to the police department.
I have nothing specific, unless there's questions.
Hearing none, I guess you're off the hook. Pending business, there is none. New business, a motion to accept the resignation with regrets of court clerk Deborah Saldo effective June 1st, 2023.
Make a motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. B, motion to pass the municipal cooperation resolution that New York, NY class requires, and I just read it. I don't have to read it again, do I? I'm listening to you guys for direction here.
I'll move it.
Okay. Discussion, I was intrigued that they're out of Denver, Colorado, whoever printed this resolution.
Oh, really?
Down at the very bottom of page three.
Wait, the short story really quick, the short story really quick is that approves that it's the village of Baldwinville is doing business with them, and I am the lead contact for that, and, and that's really it, under New York state law, blah, 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 that kind of stuff, so it's, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, the primary thing of the resolution was a whole paragraph that New York state municipal law allows blah.
Yeah.
School districts, all this, everybody under the sun to be part of it. He mentioned Denver, just to make sure you knew we read it. Fine print at the bottom. I had a professor in college that I got really upset with, he tested us on the footnotes in books, and I was like, are you kidding me?
Dude.
Did we vote on that?
Not yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item C, motion to approve Richard Clark and Bruce Stebbins to be authorized to sign and/or transact on the NY class accounts on behalf of the village. Make a motion.
I will second it.
Let's have discussion. This transact thing.
More on your plate.
Ah, no, it's the treasurer, he'll be doing the transacting act.
I'll see.
Through my absence.
That just might be a concert call.
We're gonna invest while he's in London. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item D, motion to approve the two-year deal for the village's workers' comp carrier, PERMA, at a discounted premium of $62,111 for the 2023-2024 year, and the discounted premium of $65,215 for the 2024-2025 year, depending on the village's loss ratio.
I'll move it.
Second.
Discussion. So these numbers aren't locked in, like we got surprised one year, so this second year?
Yeah.
It might change depending if there's claims? If somebody gets hurt, yeah.
Yes, it might, and it's actually lower than the past two years.
When they say discounted premium, you know, what kind of discount he's giving, what discount?
No, I just know that we have an early discount if we pay before July 1st of $1,000, so, yeah.
Let's give $1,000 off, wow. All in favor?
What they're saying is that before July 1st, the premium was $1,000 more than you should have had to pay.
I understand that, that's how many, that's how many things. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, item E, motion to declare obsolete miscellaneous electronics and damaged shelving units from Cannonwood Senior Center as surplus.
Second.
I don't know about this one.
Yeah, this is miscellaneous.
What are the miscellaneous electronics?
Well, they're obsolete.
Just out of curiosity, what is it here?
What do you want?
It's an H-trac player.
Who's gonna have to haul this away?
I'll have to call Chuck. Let's just say there are several keyboards that have not seen a desk in many years, and things have been damaged.
Oh, boy.
Let's hope they have more fun. They're sitting on this damaged shelving.
That's right. It's going as a package deal.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Kind of a motion to pay bills is audited.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could I may have a motion to adjourn at 8:05?
Move.
Second. We're in. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
I thought we were having a second.
Everybody get, go home.
It was the other one. It was the previous one.